We'll call the meeting to order. We'll note that all commissioners are present and the first item of business is the order of business. Are there any changes or additions, deletions to the order of business?
Good afternoon, President Johnson, Commissioners. No, there is no change, there isn't any changes today.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Valesky.
I want to approve the agenda.
Is there a second? We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay, the motion carries. Are there any items on the consent agenda you wish to discuss? That is our motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move. Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So the motion carries. We'll go to the non timetable agenda and the first item we have there is a proposed ordinance revising the liquor license and City Attorney Goss is going to introduce that for us.
This revision exchanges the language pertaining to the food sale requirements from the beer only license to the beer and wine license. Currently, the beer only license requires a food sales component and the beer and wine does not. Making this change will bring all existing license holders into compliance and staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Ms. Goss. If there's anyone from the public that would like to comment regarding this proposed ordinance, you may do so now. Just come to the podium, state your name and we'll hear your comments. Anybody wish to comment? No one from the public. Are there any questions or comments by other city staff or commissioners? I assume this ordinance 1589?
Yes, that's correct.
That's correct, okay. Is there a motion regarding first reading of 1589?
Move to approve first reading, Mr. President.
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. We'll go to item B, which is statewide transportation improvement program with the North Dakota Department of Transportation and Mr. Millstone is going to take this one.
That's correct. Tonight, we have before you the North Dakota DOT investment in Dickinson program, which includes their STIP for the next, well currently, and for the next couple of years. The STIP is a state transportation improvement plan and the North Dakota DOT has requested comments back to them by August 10th. So if the commission has any comments, they can just direct them to me prior to that. We could send them forward. I think they have about nine projects here and I'll run through these quickly. This is the first project, the interim bypass. It's completed, it was completed in the fall of 2014. Total cost thirty-two and a half million, city share seven hundred and forty-seven thousand. Next project is a recent investments to exit 56. They're expecting construction to be completed this fall. Estimated cost thirty million and a city share of five million. Next project we have here is the State Avenue Railroad Bridge. This looks to be completed next fall, so about fourteen or sixteen months from now. Estimated cost thirty-two point two million, city share one point three million. I'd like to just take a stop here for a second because I just remembered that Ames Construction Company that is working this project had asked if they could come in our next, to our next commission meeting in two weeks and give a presentation. So if the commission agrees to that, we can have them come in and give us a presentation. That's very good. I'll make sure that they're on the agenda for next time. Thank you. Next project is what's almost completed right now. It's the exit sixty-one South Ramp Signals. It's supposed to be completed third week in August. I just heard this morning that the signals will go live this coming Wednesday. So it's good to be able to have the public aware of that, that the new signals at the south ramps will go live this Wednesday. There was no city share on this. The estimated cost was three hundred fifty thousand from the DOT. The next project is the reconfiguration of this area with the north and southbound ramps. There is no cost at this point because it's undetermined what kind of alternatives they're going to have, but they do expect it to be completed in 2016, which is good because the last time I heard it was still on hold. So it looks like they are moving forward with that project and hopefully soon we'll have some costs to go with that. Next project is Museum Drive. I believe two years ago, we did the intersection. Last year, we did the west side of that and so in 2016, they're going to be doing the east side, I'm sorry, the west side, which goes from where the intersection ended all the way to our mill and overlay project on the east side. Estimated cost one, one point two-five million, city share six hundred sixty thousand. Next project is our East Philard reconstruction, going from the diverge of the Business Loop, the east side of the Business Loop, all the way to Energy Drive. They expect this to be completed in 2019 for an estimated cost of six million with a shi, city share of two point two-five million. Next project is the Eighth Street South Mill and Overlay. This is part of the truck bypass. It'll run from a couple hundred feet west of twenty-two over to the KLD subdivision. Estimated cost one point one million, city share four hundred thousand. Construction to be completed in 2018. And the last project I have on the list is the I-94 Business Loop East, which includes Tenth Avenue East. Again, construction to be completed in 2019, at least that's what they estimate at this point. Estimated cost nine point four million with a city share of nine hundred and forty thousand. With that, I'm available for any questions you might have. And once again, the DOT is looking for comments by the 10th of August, so if you could submit them to me before then, I can get them out, if there are any comments out there.
Mr. Millstone, this last project, is curb and gutter anticipated in that construction?
I believe it is and I also believe there's some widening along that route, yes.
Do you know what they have slated for the west part of the bypass and the re-
That's a good question.
-engineering of exit fifty-nine?
That's a very good question. I've heard somewhere in the books, they're talking about widening that to five lanes. I'm not sure when that's slated for. I can find out for you and get back to you.
I think in terms of comments, I mean, I'd like to, you know, hear their formal thinking on that. I suspect if that's not on this list, then we're looking at that project beyond 2019 and I think, you know, we already have some traffic issues at exit fifty-nine. You know, go another four or five years with continued development out there, the middle school, I would expect greater issues.
That's very, very true. I will speak to the DOT and find out when they have that slated for.
Yeah, and the thought about the west bypass too. We can't, we can't drop the ball on that or have anybody else drop the ball. I knew there was some reshuffling of schedules, but that still needs to be built.
I agree. Mr. Jackson.
President Johnson, I believe that first, the west bypass was submitted on our side, our submission was that before the east business loop. I'm not sure what funding was. Our submission had the west.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Zeroff. And I know Mr. Kessel and I had a recent teleconference call with the Director of the North Dakota DOT and also not on here is the bypass that would terminate at exit fifty-six and my impression was they were going ahead with that, that that was maybe their number one priority.
Yeah, that's what I was referring to, is the rest of the bypass up to fifty-six.
Okay, oh, yeah.
The ultimate bypass, yes, yes.
Yeah, I think that's, that'll be under construction within two years, I believe.
Well, it should be on here, then.
Yes.
It should be, that's correct. I will point that out to them.
Is there another funding stream than the STIP for those projects?
I think everything has to be on the STIP.
Okay.
You've got about three different funding sources in the projects we're seeing here, so.
Are these just federally funded projects that are on this list?
Yes.
Yeah, the interim bypass, or not the interim, but the-
The ultimate bypass.
The ultimate bypass, I think, would be totally state funded, I think.
And maybe that's why.
Yeah.
Thank you. I'll look into those questions for you. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments on the transportation projects? Now, on the agenda, it says consideration to approve document. I'd be a little hesitant to vote to approve it until we had answers to the, some of the points that were raised.
I agree, Mr. President. Let me get some answers for you before we approve.
Okay, so we don't, it's okay if we don't take action on this?
I think they just want comments at this point.
Okay. Well, you have a few of those.
Thank you.
All right. Well, then we're going to move on to item C and this is another ordinance. This involves motor vehicle and offenses and City Attorney Goss is also going to introduce this and I would imagine this is ordinance fifteen ninety.
That's correct. I worked with the Police Department in reviewing and updating portions of Section 23 of the code relating to motor vehicles and traffic. The proposed ordinance brings the city code up to date and includes recent revisions in Senate and House bills. It also combines the duplicative truck route portions of the code and then finally, two sections of Chapter 25 relating to offenses are incorporated, including refusing to halt for a police officer and possession of marijuana paraphernalia since that charge is now being misdemeanor city offense as of August 1st.
So let me ask you a question then. My impression was after reading through this, that many of these changes are dictated by recent legislative changes at the state level.
That is correct. There are legislative changes at the state level and then some of the revisions are just to mirror the state code and fix some typos and minor things like that in the current code.
So beyond that, there are no changes being proposed by city staff that aren't related to what you just said?
Correct.
Right now, if there's anyone from the public that would like to comment regarding this proposed ordinance, number fifteen ninety, you may do so now. Come to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to comment? There's no one from the public that wishes to comment? Again, staff or city commissioners, if you have any questions or comments? Would there be a motion then regarding first reading of fifteen ninety?
Make a motion to approve. Second.
We have the motion and the second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, the only thing I find myself wondering about is when we enumerate these fees in an ordinance, I find myself wondering why we don't do it similar to our other fee schedules or just with statements matching state amounts. And it, not a big deal, would just seem to simplify it for us.
Some of the portions do actually reference the century code, so that is a revision that can be done the way that it was currently in many of the sections. It listed a specific fee, but like I said, that can be changed to just reference the century code.
I think Mr. Jackson's referring to it. There's at least two places where the fine is mentioned. I don't, I think it reduced from forty dollars to twenty dollars, something like that. Was that just mirroring, is that set by the legislature or is that being recommended by city staff?
No, that is actually in the legislature and in the century code in past revisions, so it was just updated to reflect those.
I mean, it's up to staff, I guess, what's easier for you guys, but it would seem to me if we just referenced the legislative amounts or the amounts in state law, then we wouldn't have to be changing these all the time.
That's absolutely something that we can do.
Other comments? Let's see, we did get a motion to approve, didn't we, already? We'll go ahead and vote and then if there are no other comments, Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So the motion carries. That brings us to item D, which is the second reading of the panhandling ordinance, number fifteen eighty-eight, and Attorney Winko will introduce this item.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, Commissioners. Before you, you have a draft of ordinance fifteen eighty-eight. The last time this draft was presented to you, the only revision that we have incorporated is comments made by Commissioner Steiner and by President Johnson to identify Highway twenty-two corridor. So as you read through the ordinance as it's drafted, subsection D specifically identifies and defines what is going to be considered the Highway twenty-two corridor. As you will see, as it's drafted, it will begin starting within five hundred feet in any direction from the center line of intersection of Twelfth Street as Commissioner Steiner had requested at the previous meeting and then it will travel on Highway twenty-two north with a setback of one hundred feet from the center line of Highway twenty-two to the east and west of Highway twenty-two extending to the intersection of Twenty-third Street and Highway twenty-two. And the reason, in visiting with Chief Dossinger and Chief Seavock and coming up with a proportional setback requirement we felt was going to work within that Highway twenty-two corridor, it was decided among city staff that one hundred feet would be acceptable. And the only other revision that was incorporated is in three subsections C. We have just omitted the specific reference to intersection Fifteenth Street and Highway twenty-two and made it more simple in just identifying that no panhandling would be allowed within that Highway twenty-two corridor. Other than that, those were the only two changes that were incorporated since the last meeting and I'd be happy to take any questions that you have.
Thank you, Ms. Winko. So any comments or questions? This time, if there's anyone from the public that would like to comment, you may do so. Just come to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. There's no one from the public who wants to comment. Any comments by staff or commissioners?
Mr. President, just one. I know we were looking into signage and so on. I wonder who's taking that?
Good evening, Mr. President, Members of the Commission. We have currently researched several sign types and I have presented them to the Leadership Committee on those. We're still waiting to present them to the City Administrator, Castle. He was absent that day and I wanted to present them to him first for his approval. We are looking at different types of signs and sign ideas for that corridor.
Thank you, Chief. Are there any other comments, questions? Not? Would there be a motion regarding second reading and final passage of ordinance fifteen eighty-eight?
So move, Mr. President.
I'll second.
We have the motion to approve second reading and the second. Any discussion? Not? We'll vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so the motion carries. We'll go to item E. This is a citizen interest form with the Airport Authority and Mr. Valesky will introduce this item.
President Johnson, Members of the Committee, we have before you a consideration to approve an application from an applicant, Ken Cousy, to join the Airport Authority. The city and the Airport Authority does recommend approval.
You've heard the introduction and the recommendation. Any comments or questions? I think most of us are pretty familiar with Mr. Cousy since he's a former city employee, so.
We need a motion to approve that?
We need a motion to approve, yes.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion to approve and the second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Reports, we have two reports. One is regarding the Baker Building, the other's regarding the tour of the city and I believe the Baker Building, Ms. Goss is going to report on.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. On, at the July sixth commission meeting, we had discussed the sale of the Baker Building. We have sold that property to Dickinson Public Schools and they were set to take possession of the building on August 1st.
Did they?
They have not taken possession yet.
All right. Anything else that you have to report?
Nope, that's it.
And then, Mr. Valesky, you're going to report on the city tour?
Yes, President Johnson, Members of the Commission. Just wanted to remind everybody at the next scheduled, before the next scheduled commission meeting on August 17th, we are going with the tour of the Engineering Annex, Public Safety Center, West Lift Station, and Waste Water Reclamation Facility. We'll be leaving at 1:00 PM in front of the library and we'll return to the library at approximately four o'clock.
Okay, any questions about that? Okay, any, anything else, Mr. Valesky?
Yes, just one more thing. Just wanted to remind the commission that we do have our 2016 budget review meeting tomorrow at the Public Works Building at one o'clock. I wouldn't want you to miss it.
What time was that again?
One o'clock. One o'clock. And it's at the Public Works Building.
Is there, is there anyone planning to not be there tomorrow?
I won't be able to attend.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Well, then we're going to move down to item six, engineering, and Mr. Millstone is going to, you have two items there for us stacked up.
That's correct, Mr. President, Commission Members. Tonight, we have two items for consideration of notice of award approvals. The first is for Cofield's Plumbing and Heating out of Bismarck. This is for the River Drive Booster Water Main Ties. The actual bid came in at one million, one hundred ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred ninety-nine dollars and ten cents, well below the engineer's estimate of one point three roughly. One thing I just want to note that's important here, this is really two projects put together. It's the Water Main Ties and it's also a boring under Fourth Avenue with Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad. I'd happily like to announce that for that boring, we've been carrying a much, much higher number because we expected for that to cover all the borings and to the best of my knowledge, Mr. Zeroff might be able to help me here, we only have this one boring, which came in at three hundred and twenty thousand. We were carrying in the CIP two million dollars for that, so I'm happy to announce we're well below that number.
That's, that's good news. All right, you've heard the introduction and I'm assuming the recommendation is to approve the notice.
That is correct.
Any comments or questions? Not? Would there be a motion to approve the notice of award for this project?
Move to approve, Mr. President.
I'll second.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So the motion carries. Mr. Millstone, you want to take the second item there also?
Thank you, Mr. President, Commission Members. The second item is a consideration for notice of award for the half million dollar east side water storage tank. This is the tank that's directly south and a little to the east of the new Public Works Building. The low bidder that we'd like to accept is Maguire Iron out of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, with a bid of one million, five hundred sixty-eight thousand dollars. The engineer's estimate was one and a half million, so on this one, they're over about four and a half percent, sixty-eight thousand dollars. And again, we'd like to recommend approval to Maguire.
Thank you. You've, you've heard the introduction and the recommendation. Any comments or questions? Not? Would there be a motion regarding the approval of this notice of award?
So move.
Second.
We have the motion to approve and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We have some timetable agenda items. We'll move up there at five o'clock. We have an item regarding Lincoln Park Town Homes and Jean Burris is here to introduce and explain this item. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, Commissioners. I'm here today to ask you to sponsor a CDBG, your Community Development Block Grant Fund, involving the Lincoln Park Town Homes III. They've already built, you're probably familiar with the Lincoln Park Town Homes which exist on the east end of town. These would be built adjacent to it. The money we're dealing with here, it comes from the Governor's Set Aside Fund. It'll be three hundred thousand dollars plus administrative expenses. The total project will be in the neighborhood of six million dollars and it's for a thirty unit low-income housing development. Twenty-three will be low-income, rented at low-income levels depending on thirty to eighty percent of LMI and seven will be at a commercial rate. With all CDBG projects, as you have in the past, we must have the sponsorship of the city or county in which the project is located. No obligation to the city, just a pass-through. The money would come from the Department of Commerce, pass through the city eventually to, is designated towards the acquisition of the property, the real estate.
Okay.
Any questions? I don't, I don't need anything signed today. I need something to appear in the minutes that the city would sponsor and approve the project. Applications would come later.
Any questions or comments? Any questions or comments for Mr. Burris? Anybody opposed to being, the city being the sponsor here?
I, I just have one comment. Are, are we going to address, I know there's, there's some concern with Lincoln one and two, off-street parking there?
Our involvement would only be with the CDBG funding and the administration of it. It's the smallest part of the entire project. The rest will follow. What, what we do basically is we have to do the environmental clearance on the property. Once that's done, then it'll move forward. And I guess that would, I would suggest that would be the time to raise those questions.
Any other questions? Now, is there a motion regarding this request?
Make the motion to approve.
We have the motion for the city approving the sponsorship. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Burris. We'll go back down to item seven, Public Works, and we have, this involves the bid on lift station number five, and Mr. Zurov will introduce and explain this item.
Thank you, President Johnson and Commission members. The bids for the lift station five, number five upgrades were open July sixteenth. We had two responsible bidders. We had John T. Jones as a general contract. Their bid was one, one million, nine hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. We had a mechanical contract bid received from Central Mechanical for seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred dollars. We did not get an electrical contract bid or a combined contract bid. At this point, I would like to recommend award to John T. Jones and Central Mechanical to include, the award is contingent upon final approval by the Department of Health. And then, after this, I would recommend we do a change order to add the electrical portion of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in our next motion.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Zurov. You've heard his introduction and his recommendations. This was also covered in the meeting memo. Are there questions or comments regarding this item?
I believe I mentioned a little bit last time of the irregularity of this bid. We did not get electrical. So with the help of City Attorney Winko and Apex Engineering, I didn't know what the direct, next direction was. And apparently, if there is no third bid or prime bid, that you can do a change order up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollar mark. And my understanding, the electrical bid that they did not get in there was a hundred and fifty-eight thousand. So we feel comfortable that this isn't just trying to put this in the project, and that we'll have change orders in the future.
Okay.
And if you have any questions per century code, Ms. Christina would be glad to answer them.
Any other questions or comments? So there's two items we're going to act on. Then, item one, if you accept the recommendation would be to accept the bid for the construction of the new lift station. And if we deal with that in a positive manner, then we would act on the change order to that contract. So we'll take the first item first. Is there a motion regarding it?
I'll move. We accept the construction bid.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Is there any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So the motion carries. Now, the second item is the change order for one hundred and fifty thousand dollars to add the electrical work to the general contract. Is there a motion regarding that item?
I'll move. We approve the change order.
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, then, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So the motion carries. We're going to go back to the timetable agenda item. We have a five-ten item, and this is a special use permit issue. And Planning Director, Mr. Hadley, will introduce this item.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, and Commission members. This is Resolution thirty-two. It's for NALCO. It's at sixty-fourtieth Street. It's an eleven-point-two-acre site. It's a site that's been reviewed through the special use permit process for hazardous material storage. It does have seven conditions of approval that were recommended through staff and through the Planning Commission. Both staff and the Planning Commission recommend approval. Just to clarify, they do need to, there was a concern from the Fire Department, and they do need to get final approval for the types of hazardous, hazardous material storage that they're going to have on-site.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hadley. You've, you've heard his explanation, and did you make a recommendation?
Yes, the, the, planning staff and, and Planning Commission both recommended approval.
Okay, you've heard that. Comments or questions for him? All right, it's Resolution thirty-two dash twenty-fifteen. Is there a motion regarding it?
Mr. President, I move we approve special use permit.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson? Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Running a little ahead of schedule, the downtown banners, or Lori, is it Willett?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you mind going a little early?
I don't mind at all.
All right, well, welcome to the Commission.
Hi. Lori Willett with the Downtown Dickinson Association. About three months ago, we started to put together a process of putting some banners downtown. I've just put one packet together. I think Leonard kind of passed it around. As a prompt page, you'll see the questions we had to answer, so the responses are all on there. Funding is private. It's about, we're trying to get twenty banners, about ten are funded already. They are the banners where it says Western Edge out there, or where we do rodeo days. We, in turn, when there's not an event going on, have the Dickinson Downtown Association banners up there with our logo, trying to just keep people familiarized that we do have an association, and we're trying to grow downtown. The biggest obstacle I think we had was using the polls that the Convention Center had said that they already had banners on, and I talked to Terry Thiel, and that's the unattached piece of paper to that, where she signed off on it and said it was, you know, yes, go ahead, use the banners. We're going to kind of work hand in hand with them on where to place them. You'll see a map there where we've, we've chosen twenty locations. You know, everything's movable, just working with everybody in the city. But they were, the visitor center was very much on board with us being able to start, you know, trying to promote the Downtown Association. So I'm looking for your approval, so we can build some, put some banners up.
Does our city staff have any concerns or comments regarding these banners?
President Johnson, my only concern was not knowing whose banners were, were whose, was the CDB, you know, that we're replacing those, or these additional, and I think you've answered those questions. One other question I have, would you order these banners, does it include the brackets, or do we need, does the city need to get the brackets?
Most of, most of the polls had the brackets. Lori from Quality Quick Print, when she went around and chose the locations, she found that a few, I think three or four of the polls had inefficient brackets, maybe parts and pieces were missing. So she did turn in a price sheet to the city also and said, if you want to update them, but you know, as I said, right now, we're only sitting at about ten funded. We'd love to get twenty out there. I think just to help with the placement of the city being able for us to use their equipment to get in place. We kind of thought, when we've got the first ten, we'll get those up, and then when we've got the next ten, we'll get those up. So we're not wasting everybody's time putting one banner up at a time.
That's the only question I had.
Okay. Is there anyone else from the city that, Mr. Millstone?
Mr. President, Commission members, engineering doesn't have any problems with them putting banners up. And personally, I'm actually in favor of that. I think the downtown does need something like that.
Thank you.
Anybody else? So this takes Commission action to formally approve something like this?
Yes, Mr. President, I would make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Mr. President, I'd move we approve the downtown banner as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Steiner, and we have the motion and the second. Any other discussion? Go ahead and vote, then. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for being here. Okay, the five-twenty timetable agenda item, that's all we have left on our agenda. The family that this easement impacts, were they planning to be in attendance? Don't think so? So there'd be no objection to acting on it earlier?
And I don't believe so, Mr. President. In fact, the Bronnegals have signed the easement. We do have the original document. I don't know if that was included in your packet. Scott Schneider just got it signed this morning, I believe, with the Bronnegals here at City Hall. So they have consented, and we are just waiting on the Commission's approval to terminate and vacate the original easement that was put in place back in 2013, and approve the new easement that will be put in place effective upon signature.
Okay. Well, that's a pretty good introduction. Do you have any, anything else you'd want to say about it?
I would just mention that we were approached by Apex, Dave Paulson with Apex, to put this in place and take care of getting this fixed for the Bronnegals. I will have to give thanks and kudos to Scott Schneider with Apex and Dave Paulson, who did an excellent job getting this signed and taking care of with the Bronnegals, and I appreciate their efforts.
I understand from the memo, this, the original easement would have destroyed some, some plantings?
That's correct, Mr. President.
And so you're altering the...
Yes, we're slightly altering the legal description so that the trees and shrubbery that are located on the Bronnegals property be less affected and damaged by the proposed easement location. So the terms of the easement will stay the same. It's just a slight variation in the proposed legal description for the easement. Attorney, excuse me, City Engineer Kubis has reviewed the document and has given his approval.
Okay. All right, so it's, it's two items to act on here. The first, then, is to vacate, to approve the vacation of the original easement. And then the second action would be to approve the new easement, which is just slightly different.
That's correct, Mr. President.
Okay, we'll take the first item first again. So would there be a motion regarding the approval of the vacation of the easement?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. Now that that easement is gone, we have a new one in front of us. Would there be a motion to approve the new easement?
Move to approve.
I think, Mr. Altman, beached, Mr. Steiner, would you settle for a second?
I will second.
Mr. Steiner, second. Some motion, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. I think we're down to, are there any Commission comments or reports? Is there anyone from the public that would like to address the Commission? If so, come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments.
President Johnson, Commissioners, Bob Seavock, Dickinson Fire Department. I just want to mention, for the sake of the Commission and for the sake of the viewing public, that over the next several days, United Blood Services is again hosting their annual blood drive, which is known around here as the Battle of the Badges, local law enforcement against local fire departments. And they're at the Badlands or the Bijou Activity Center this year, from noon until seven P.M. today, tomorrow, and Wednesday. So we would like to encourage everyone's support. This is a time of year that's crucial for United Blood Services. This time of year, their inventories are always at a critical level, and it's extremely important for them to rebuild those inventories. So again, we've had great cooperation from the community in the past. We're looking to set some new records in the amount of blood drawn this year, and we hope the community gets behind this and supports it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Is there anyone else from the public? There's no one from the public that wants to address the Commission. Chair, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Those saying nay, the motion carries. We're adjourned.